Hunter Ehrens for the Office of Vice President. Indicate by voting your hand.
Okay. So those who are, would like to choose Hunter Ehrens as Vice President, please raise your hand. So we have one, two, three, four.
Hi, this is Michelle. I would also like to vote for Hunter.
That's five. All right. Anyone else? So that's a five-four vote. So that's a majority automatically. So that would not, we won't need to do for the other part of the, for Dr., for Mr. Fidler. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yeah.
That's good, okay. That's good as a vote, okay. All right, so the secretary has stated entirely that it's a five-o vote for, five to four, I guess five-four vote for, for Hunter. It was in order of nomination. That's why I did it that way. So congratulations to Hunter for being the Vice President of our Exeter School District. So I guess you gotta change seats now. Congrats, Allison.
Okay. So before we move on, I would like to present a plaque to Dr. Hamburger for his time as President of the School Board. So this says, "In appreciation and recognition of your three years of distinguished service as President of the Exeter Township School District Board of Education, Dr. David Hamburger, Board President 2017 through 2020. Your knowledge and steady hand have expertly guided the district, including crucially during the worldwide COVID pandemic. Thank you for your passionate commitment to public education." I just wanted to say that I'm honored tonight to be chosen as President of the Exeter Township School District School Board, and I thank you for trusting me with the responsibilities of the office. I will do my best to do what's in the best interest of our students and our community and for all of our school district. I'm looking forward to working collaboratively with all of you, so thank you. Every member has before them the schedule? Well, we, we did not pass it out, did we? It's in there?
It was in the board docs.
Okay.
It was attached in the board docs.
All right. Every, every member has attached in their board docs a schedule of the 2021 voting meetings scheduled through next year, and it will be on the third Tuesday of the month. If the members of this board see a need to make any changes to the schedule at this point, I will open the floor to discussion.
Call the question.
Okay. Since it appears that no one is inclined to suggest any changes, may I have a motion that the secretary publicize our meeting schedule as set forth in Policy 006?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Okay, the motion is approved. We need a motion to... What? Oh. Sorry. Okay, let's, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. We need a motion to authorize signatures with PNC Bank for the district's disbursement checking account for all funds as follows. President Allison Wilson, Vice President Hunter Ehrens, Board Secretary Brian Feig, Treasurer Alana Panzer.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We also need a motion to authorize current signatures to be official until electronic signatures can be obtained for 2021 School Board officials.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, motion approved. Are there any board members, and that's the end of that section, are there any board members who seek to be heard at this time? This is Michelle. I just want to thank Dave for his service. I didn't know any better coming on the board, you know, as to whatever everything entailed as far as being a member and then what it, what it would be like having someone as the president. And I just feel like he has done a phenomenal job. He made me feel comfortable and feel like a valued board member from the very beginning, helping, answering questions, you know, just overall a fantastic human being and did a great job. And I was, you know, honored to be on the board with him, and I think he did a great job. So thank you, Dave.
Thanks so much, Michelle. Appreciate that, those comments.
I too would like to acknowledge your leadership, Dr. Hamburger. It's a very difficult position to have, especially when you have nine, eight other different people on the board. Some of us could be more difficult than others, and I really believe that your, your style, your compassion for public education, your openness, your background as a psychologist was truly necessary. And I appreciate all that you did. It was an enormous time commitment, and especially in this time of COVID, to be the steady hand to get us this far. I appreciate all that you've done for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd really like to say to the board too, it's, it's really been, you know, my honor and pleasure to serve in this capacity and, you know, it's, it does, it does require, I think, sometimes some, some careful thinking and, and some cooperation. And I really appreciate the, you know, the other board members and their willingness to kind of work with me and, and with, you know, Dr. Minor and her administrative staff. You know, it's, it's probably, and Allison will probably find out a little more time-consuming than you might think it is at times. And so, you know, I, I want to wish Allison well. I think she'd make a great, you know, President. And of course, Hunter's coming back as Vice President, who had been Vice President before. So just wishing everybody a good year, and thanks again for your support during my tenure.
Okay. Any other board members like to speak? Okay.
Can I, can I also just heap praise on Dave quick? I, you know, I think that you did a fantastic job. And there's one title that I'm just reminded of, and it's from a Shakespeare play. It's "A Man for All Seasons." And I think that you really showed yourself to be ready for any challenge that came up. And I'm sure we didn't always agree, and I know that to be the case, but you were definitely a steady hand on the ship the entire time, so thank you.
Thanks, Hunter.
Can I just correct the record? That was not Shakespeare.
It wasn't?
Robert Bolt.
I feel so silly right now. I, I went to Exeter, so.
That's okay.
Correct the minutes.
I believe we have completed the agenda for the organization meeting, and members of the public are advised that after we adjourn the organization meeting tonight, we'll take a five-minute break and then reconvene right afterwards with our regular December workshop meeting, also scheduled for this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Motion to adjourn has been moved and seconded on, wait, read that. The motion carries and we are adjourned. We will reconvene in five minutes. Welcome to the Board Workshop Meeting for December 1st, 2020. We will now open the floor for public comments. So if you would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium.
Hello. Congratulations, Allison and Hunter, on your President and Vice President. That's right, okay. Congratulations, Hunter and Allison, on your Vice President and Presidency. And just a couple of things I just noticed. I just want to bring up the facts on a couple of things, and I'm just going to stick to the facts. I'm Michelle Pluzwitz, 400 Walnut Road. I am a teacher in this district, and I just want to talk about some of the things that were mentioned last, during last meeting and also this meeting too. You know, first of all, I just want to say, my son graduated from Exeter and last year, during the COVID. He did not have his graduation, nor did he have his prom or anything. He still ended up with a 1520 on his SATs and a 35 on his ACTs. So he had the best possible education here at Exeter. So when I hear snide remarks about Exeter and the education that happens in this district, I get very passionate about that, because I know these teachers. These teachers are wonderful teachers, and they do a great job. So please keep your comments to yourself about that. And the next thing I just want to talk about is Dr. Minor's plan about, sorry, I was just a little upset about the whole thing. But anyways, Redding Hospital in the last 24 hours had 49 cases of COVID-19. Current patients is 123 patients. ICU is seven patients, ventilators six. You know the numbers in this county are growing with COVID. And you also know that in the school districts, it's spreadable as well, too. Our staff deserve safety. So do our students. And I'm not just talking about the teachers. I'm talking about the custodians. I'm talking about the aides, the secretary, everybody. And a couple of other facts I want to just say. St. Joseph's Hospital, which, Mike, I'm sure you have been a part of, 16% of total cases comes out to 3,277 cases, positive cases at St. Joseph's. ICU unit is 13.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're saying, because it doesn't sound to me like you're stating facts.
I got this from the website.
But, but 3,700 what?
3,277 positive cases.
Those are tests.
Positive tests.
Of, of how many thousand?
Out of 20,000.
Out of 37,000, just to be clear.
Actually, 20,485. 16%.
I'm telling you, but that's okay. You're, you're...
It came from the website, so.
Your numbers are incorrect. I'd also say that the hospital's not conducting its business in the middle of COVID now, the way it did in March and April, because it's learned how to deal with it.
Okay, that's good. The ICU unit is 13. Ventilators at St. Joseph's is seven. People are ventilators. My whole point of saying these numbers is because the numbers continue to grow in Berks County. You have ignored the CDC's recommendations, the Department of Health recommendations, and your own superintendent's recommendations. Are we actually going to sit back and allow our staff to continue to get COVID? And I know there were some comments made last time about staff doing things outside the school, but there's no evidence that they contracted the COVID-19 by their behaviors outside school. I mean, our website, our dashboard alone said it. It's 18, we have, I think, 18 teachers or staff members that have COVID right now, and I think 30, 30-some students who have COVID as well, too, in our district. That's a lot. That's a growing number. Dr. Levine actually talked about how it's, it's very responsible for school districts to close in a short period of time, just to basically stop the spread of COVID. Dr. Minor put down, put together a good plan. It wasn't for the whole quarter. It wasn't for the whole semester. It was only for 24 days, just to slow down the spread in our, in our, in our community. That's all it was for. Now we actually have, we are actually running the risk now of closing buildings at the last minute, so it's going to be more inconvenient for parents and teachers and students. I just, I just don't understand how that makes sense to anybody, how to do that. Why would we do something like that? So... But I also want to mention, though, that there's over 200 teachers, over 200 teachers, staff members that have been, have been, who were diagnosed with COVID throughout the United States and who have died as well, too. And I also know that if it was so safe to come into the buildings, why are the same school board members continuously on Zoom for every school board meeting? Why are also some of you not sending your kids to school if there, it's so safe to come to school? Why are your students, why are your students online? I just don't understand why are we putting, why are we ignoring the safety of our staff? And Allison, you thanked everybody, and you're looking forward to me, to working with everybody in the community and the students, but you didn't even mention staff when you just had your acceptance speech. And I just wondered why that was.
I believe I said the entire Exeter Township School District.
No, I believe you said students and community. Okay. That's all I had to say.
If I can just say quick, if anyone was frustrated by my comment, I apologize if there really is a question about how I feel about the Exeter Township School District and what it's done for me, as well as for many members of my family. Let it not be in question that I think that this is an amazing district, and I wouldn't be serving here if I didn't think that.
First one of these, so I'll try and get this right. Zachary Kratsis, 141, Chafer's Road. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. During the November 17th meeting, my wife and I sat at our kitchen table and listened to a lot of residents share their feelings regarding Exeter Township Schools needing to remain open and for sports to continue. I can truly appreciate how difficult it is. We all have it right now. I feel like during the last meeting, we were making a lot of decisions on feelings and less on facts. So I'd like to provide factual data for the board to consider if they'd like to make another decision soon on virtual learning before it's too late. Our hybrid model started on November 2nd, per the COVID Tracking Project from The Atlantic. The national hospital bed usage on that date was 48,693. I just checked it 15 minutes ago. It is now more than doubled in 30 days to 98,600. Another data set to consider from the PA Department of Health, Pennsylvania's COVID hospital bed usage on November 2nd was 1,145. As of today, it has quadrupled to 4,744. Berks County, like much of the country, currently is on an upward trend of cases since the beginning of November. Our daily deaths reported today were the highest since May of a, of a total of 180. Finally, Governor Wolf stated today that Pennsylvania is projected to run out of ICU beds by the end of the month for all patients. We must take this recent data seriously. The CDC's guidelines online state that they believe schools should stay open with strict mitigations and rely on local data to make those decisions, and I believe you've tried to do that. The problem with this guidance is that it was last updated on October 28th, before the latest national surge, meaning the school board is in uncharted territory and is in an unenviable position. I understand that. I would urge you, though, to reconsider your motion tabled on November 17th. This isn't only about children's lower transmission of the virus and getting sick. It's about our fellow residents, teachers, healthcare workers, and family members getting the virus from them. We must work together to limit the spread. I heard a lot of stories from students and parents three weeks ago discussing their wish for sports to stay open. As a previous Exeter High School athlete myself, I'd like to share my view on that topic. The goal of any student athlete should be to learn certain life skills like teamwork, sacrifice for the better of the group, patience, accountability. This pandemic is a perfect opportunity to learn those lessons without a ball or a mitt. I believe that the next three to six months are going to be critical to their upbringing, and honestly, as parents, if those three to six months are so important as compared to any other time, haven't we really failed our own children? Here's a harsh reality. A child's basketball season does not matter right now. Their future does. My final statistic, although you kind of stole it from me here. According to the Associated Press, roughly 300 school employees have been killed by the coronavirus in the United States since the outbreak took hold. Many of those schools are using the same preventative measures our district is. Look around. We only have 25 of us here tonight because of the virus. Do we honestly believe that everyone is 100% safe at school? If these recent statistics don't worry you, I am not sure what will. Just know that there are a lot of parents at home too scared to come to a meeting like this, asking themselves, "What are you all waiting for?"
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, David Volmer, 335 South Baumstown Road. I just want to say I completely disagree with my fellow community members here. I'm not into this fear mongering. Our kids are safe. Look at New York. Cases are going up. They're sending kids back to school. I think it's a...
If someone is speaking, we can't hear.
I spoke too soon, I'm sorry.
Okay, John, I think we're getting new batteries for the microphone.
All right, now I got to remember where I was. As my colleagues, or my fellow neighbors said, that the reason why there's only 25 of us here is because of coronavirus. In the past, nobody comes to school board meetings unless it's a big issue. So I completely disagree with it's because of the coronavirus. I think this evening, it brought me out because I wanted to state, you know, my feelings and bring my personal things into this, just like everybody else wants to. It's a personal choice, and no one should infringe on others' rights, okay? Everybody said even back in March, we got to slow the spread, okay? Wear masks, do all these things. If that was going to work, it would have worked by now, okay? You know, it's, it's, may slow it down a little bit, but it's, it's not making an impact. Shutting down our schools is not going to make an impact, except negatively impact our children, okay? My son being back in the hybrid model, he's doing really, really well, very active in the sports, and it's making his life better. My wife and I make the personal choice to send him to school along with his choice. If he was scared, if we didn't feel it was the right thing to do, we wouldn't do it. But we do, and that gives us the choice. And I applaud the school board in making the decision that they did at the last meeting, and I'm going to be at every meeting from now on stating, you know, my feelings and the feelings from a lot of my friends and family, because, you know, this fear mongering needs to stop. Coronavirus is here to stay. We just have to deal with it. And if there's a will, there's a way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, so.
I'm, do we allow?
Can I speak again? Okay, thank you, Hunter. Thank you very much. Okay. One thing I did forget to mention the last time I spoke, and I think I was just, most of you know me and you know how emotional I get, especially when I feel like the teachers in this district are being attacked. I take that personally and I don't like it. I don't like the fact that, you know, our teachers are being disrespected basically for all their hard work that they're doing. One of your, one of your board members and I had a conversation and she had said that, you know, she is an essential worker and so are teachers. Teachers are considered essential workers. Now, I went to my chiropractor yesterday and she's a chiropractor as well, too. And I actually, you know, my chiropractor, we waited in the, we waited outside in the parking lot and he called me in as one by one, as a patient. Only one patient could go in at a time. That's what doctors are doing right now. My eye doctor does that same thing as well, too. So, but here's the difference between those essential workers and teachers. We don't have, we don't have, we don't have that option. We don't have the option to say, okay, let's take your temperature and see who comes into the school and who doesn't. We don't have that option. And that's what I want the board to consider as well, too. Yeah, I would say that we are essential workers as well, too. That we are important, but we are also human beings and we also do deserve that respect and that safety that we need in our district as well, too. Some of you, like I said before, are online on Zoom for every single school board meeting. Now, if you actually thought it was so safe to come in, then why aren't you in here? Why aren't you in that, why aren't you in that, at the table? And if you actually think it was so safe for students to go back in the hybrid model two days a week, send your kids back to school two days a week. Simple as that. There's also an article right here, The Reading Times, talking about teachers getting stressed out because of the hybrid model. They're doing everything they can. And you see the teachers at the high school, at the elementary? They are doing everything they can to make sure that our students get the proper education. But it is tough and teachers are getting burned out. So something to think about as well, too. Teachers and, teachers and staff, not just teachers, but staff in general, from custodians, from aides, from the nurses, bus drivers, everybody. We deserve safety as well. Thank you.
I just want to take an opportunity quick to just say that, you know, I appreciate the three people who came to comment, you know, with some, representing some different thoughts. What's happened in the last year has really not ever happened in any of our lifetimes. Maybe there are a few people who are still alive since the last global pandemic in this way and it's handed us some challenges that we don't want to face. And honestly, you know, I think that we have a really good administrative team. We have great teachers, we have great staff, and we're trying to make the best of it that we can. I think really the guiding decision for me, and I think I heard this from some of my colleagues, was that ultimately, the students should probably, and should, and still will be, in school. And it's because that they need to continue to progress during this time. And this time is extremely challenging. We recognize that and we're not trading carelessly with people's health and well-being. And, you know, I, I, I know that there may be some disagreement about that and it's okay that we disagree, but we disagree. School is safe. Students will continue to go there as long as it's safe and we hope that all of our employees are going to remain that way as well. And we're going to do everything we can to make sure that that's the case.
Are board members making comments now or are we making our comments at the end of the meeting? Because typically, we don't respond to the public comments. So I'm asking because I have comments that I'm saving for the end of the meeting.
Okay, this isn't a voting meeting, so we don't have comments listed at the end.
Oh.
Like we typically do. I mean, we just did have our comments at the end of our voting meeting when I asked for more comments.
So, okay, so we don't ask, does any board member have anything to say at the end of this meeting today?
I still could, I mean, it's fine. You may speak at the end if you like.
But I'm asking, I have comments, I'm asking, are we commenting now or are we waiting to the end? I can do either.
Okay, I will ask at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving forward. The third thing on our agenda is some information for the public. And the first piece of information is that last week, Dr. Minor and Dr. Hamburger signed and submitted an attestation form to the state, which tells what the state is expecting moving forward right now with COVID-19. So they are stating that any public school entity that elects to continue in-person instruction while the county is located under a substantial disease transmission for at least two consecutive weeks, we needed to agree our test to these practices. The first is that we have read and we have agreed to comply with the updated masking orders issued by the Department of Health. The second is that we have read and agreed to follow the recommendations for pre-K to 12 schools following identification of a case of COVID-19. Previously, that these were recommendations issued by the state and now we are agreeing that we will follow them in case we have, when we do have cases of COVID in our schools. And I, I believe Dr. Mrs. Harris will give us more information of exactly how that plays out with our numbers and what it would look like on a school-to-school basis because it is a little bit different. Mrs. Harris, if you'd like to go ahead with your presentation of our new data dashboard.
So the dashboard is posted behind you on the screen and Mr. Way is going to help me scroll through this as I explain it to you. Before I start talking about the dashboard, though, I do want to say a thank you so I don't forget at the end. There were a lot of hands in this project and a lot of folks who helped to create this dashboard. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in creating this and particularly to the IT team who made this functional for us and particularly to the nursing department who helps us collect all the data to be able to report on the dashboard. So with that said, as Mrs. Wilson explained, the board signed the attestation form agreeing to follow the new updated metrics and thresholds for building closures based on COVID cases within the buildings. And so we thought it would be a good idea to create this dashboard and put it on our website so that the community could see the data that we're looking at when we're making those decisions about building closures. So the first part of the dashboard is simply the number of COVID cases by building for both staff and students since November 2nd, when we resumed in-person instruction on campuses. This chart does not contain students who are fully virtual, but may have tested positive. We are keeping track of that information internally. It's important for us because those students might participate in athletics or extracurriculars and it may have an impact on that. But for the purpose of building closures, those positives are not factored in because those students aren't on campus for on-campus instruction. So this is live data. Again, the IT team is helping us to keep this up to date on the website and this data is updated as of today. I'll pause for questions about that section. I think it'll be easier if I pause at each section and see if you have any questions before I keep going.
So I, I just wanted clarification. You said that, so for example, the high school has nine student cases. Those are all stu, nine students are in person? Or you're saying that some of those are virt, like how do you know which ones are virtual?
They are in-person cases since November 2nd.
Okay, so you don't include any virtual?
Correct, not on this table. We keep track of them because, like I said, some of them might be in athletics and extracurriculars and it may require quarantine in those areas. But for the purpose of building closure, those numbers don't matter because those students aren't on campus.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Harris, would some of those students have returned to school at this point?
Yep.
Or staff return to school at this point?
Yep, absolutely.
Dawn, John Fiddler, by cases, what, what exactly do we mean? A positive test?
So we'll explain that a little bit more when we go through the metrics, but cases are both confirmed positive cases and probable cases according to the most recent DOH guidance.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And I'll give you a definition of probable case when we get to the actual chart and the metrics.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Way, if you can scroll up a little bit more. So this chart represents the 14-day rolling positive count. The 14-day rolling positive count is important because that's part of the metric that's utilized on the updated charts that PDE and DOH put out for us to follow. So before I explain anything more about this, I'm going to ask Mr. Way to click the link that we have there that takes us to the actual updated metrics. And I want to explain them to you a little bit. So there's some significant changes that they made to the metrics that we need to follow. It used to be just one chart. So building size, enrollment size, those things didn't matter. Now they've broken it up into small building, medium building, and large building. And the count for those buildings is based on the number of students you have who are attending in-person instruction. So for Exeter, all of our buildings fall into the small building category except for the senior high, which falls into the medium building category. The other significant change that they made is if you scroll up a little bit on this first one, keep going just a little bit more till you get to substantial. There you go. That substantial row used to be populated with the words fully virtual. It's no longer populated with the words fully virtual. It's populated instead with recommendations for the district about closure and how long to close the buildings for. So I wanted to point that out because that's part of the really significant change that they made in updating these metrics. The other things that I wanted to point out about this chart are, you can see if you scroll back up, Mr. Way. There you go, right there. They updated the number of student-staff positives that you should look at in terms of a building closure. So for example, this is the small chart. So you'll see if you have one student or one staff positive, they don't recommend a closure of any kind. They're just recommending some preventive measures and some cleaning measures. But if you have two to four student or staff positives in this 14-day rolling count, they recommend a closure of three to five days for a small building. One of the things we talked about as a team is how do we decide between three, four, and five-day closures? And we decided the best way to do that would be on a contextual type of basis. So if we have cases in a building that we are pretty confident are isolated cases and don't have relationship to each other, we'll err on the lower end of those closure days. But if we have cases in a building that we suspect or have concerns may have some relationship to one another, then we'll err on the higher end of that three to five days for that building. That's actually for the low. Now, if you scroll to where we're actually at, which is substantial, right there, the range is actually three to seven days. So again, there are small, medium, large buildings. All of our buildings fall into the small category except for the senior high and that falls into medium. Now, what is the 14-day rolling count? So the 14-day rolling count is the 14-day window that you're looking at in which you're collecting that number of positives. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we go back to the dashboard. But when I say positive cases or cases, what that means in terms of DOH guidance is someone who's had a confirmed positive test or someone that the DOH considers a probable case. They used to use that term presumed positive and you heard that a lot in the spring and over the summer. They've switched that term over to probable case and that essentially means someone who has had known exposure to a positive and is also symptomatic. So we're being directed to count those folks in that positive count as well. Questions about that piece?
Just had a quick question about the 14-day rolling average. Can I assume that that's calendar days and not school days?
It's actually calendar days.
Okay.
Yep.
Dr. Hamburger, I'd also like to make a further clarification because Mrs. Harris and Dr. Haller and I discussed this at length, you know, since it's been issued. It's not a 14-day average. It's a 14-day rolling count. I think we're inclined to use the word average. I noticed that you just did and I had done that repeatedly myself because previously they discussed averages and it's a really important distinction because on day one, if you would hit five count, you know, cases, you would be closed for 14 days. So you're not waiting till the 14th day to average all of the days together. So you could close on day one, day two, day 14, whenever the total count equals that. And it's a really important distinction and it's important for people to understand. And like I said, I noticed you used that word and I had done that repeatedly, I think Mrs. Harris added as well. But it really makes a difference in understanding when the closures will occur that it's in fact not an average, it's a, it's a total count.
So it's cumulative?
It's cumulative over the course of the 14-day period, correct? And then, I don't want to steal Dawn's thunder because I'm sure she'll discuss. That's fine. But that it's a reset after a closure, which is why we've reset because of the Thanksgiving break to zeros everywhere. So I'll let Mrs. Harris continue. But I did want to point out the average because it does come up.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. So, Mr. Way, if you go back to the dashboard, to the 14-day rolling positive count chart. So what Dr. Minor was just explaining is that we're looking back at a 14-day rolling count, but you can have a closure at any point in time in that 14-day rolling count if you hit the thresholds that are on that metric chart. It does not mean that you have to wait the 14 days to close a building. So that's a super important clarification. You'll see in the middle column, all those dates are set to December 1st right now because as Dr. Minor explained, we reset this because we've al, we've already had a closure here of Thanksgiving break of several days. So we're starting our 14-day rolling count today, but eventually, those dates will be different for buildings if we have to do closures. So for example, if we have to close a Watten Creek on December 4th and we close it for three days, so we close it for the 5th, 6th, and 7th, we will reset the 14-day count on this chart on December 8th. If you didn't do that, you could have schools that were in perpetuity closed because you're constantly looking at older positive cases. So these dates will not always be the same on the chart and that's why because it will be based on whether or not a building has had to close and for what period of time they've had to close.
Mrs. Harris, could you tell me why some of the buildings are designated, well, all but one of the buildings are designated as small building versus medium building?
Yep, so it's based on the size of your enrollment for students that are there for in-person instruction. So right now, based on the number of students we have in each of those buildings, that's how they get that category. Small is less than 500. Medium is 500 to less than 900. And then large is 900 plus.
This is based upon the actual number of students who are coming to school right now? For instance, we do have split schedules and that sort of thing, so.
So it's based on the total number of kids that come on campus for in-person instruction. So it's our total enrollment for a building minus the fully virtual students.
But I guess my question would be, I mean, if you've got a school of, let's say, 500 and let's say 100 are virtual and 400 are, are coming to school, you've got 200 in the morning, 200 in the afternoon in the elementary schools, let's say.
It's the total.
Is it the total 400?
Mm-hmm, yep.
I think it's important to Dr. Hamburger that there is no designation smaller than less than 500. So it wouldn't, it doesn't really necessarily matter. So the designations are, you know, are small, medium, and large. So we would be small regardless. And the smaller your population, the, the, the smaller your case count before you have to close. So that's, that's why it's, it's significant, you know, that you have, have the appropriate designation. And then you want to remember, too, that, you know, there's, there's staff and they're seeing students on each and every day. So even though, for instance, at the high school, some of the kids are coming Monday and Thursday, some are coming Tuesday and Friday. Ultimately, it's who is in the building in the course of the 14-day period, even if they're coming two different days than, than the other set. If we were to reduce the high school number to small, we would be closing much more frequently because the smaller designation ultimately does that. So, you know, we wanted to reflect the total number of students who are actually coming in the course of a 14-day period, which is why it doesn't necessarily match the high school enrollment. which is why it doesn't necessarily match the high school enrollment.
That also reflects the staff then, right? The students plus the staff together is less than 500?
Staff isn't included in the enrollment numbers, so no, they're above and beyond.
The other important clarification about the 14-day rolling count is that it's not the date that the positive is reported to the district. It's the date that that individual was A, either symptomatic, or B, went to get their test. So that's an important distinction. So for example, I had a case that was reported to me today, but it's not in the 14-day rolling count because that person had their test on November 19th. So it was prior to this 14-day rolling count window.
As you can see, there's tremendous amount of complexity to this. And I do want to take a moment, I, you know, I know Mrs. Harris thanked the tech team and the nurses. I want to reiterate that, and all of the administration, the teachers, the support staff, they all contribute. Parents who are, you know, calling us and self-reporting, and we really do appreciate the extent to which people do self-report, do communicate with the school. It is really critically important. But there's an entirely new level of complexity in terms of case count and building closure, and it is a tremendous amount of work and effort. And I really also want to make sure that I thank Mrs. Harris and Dr. Holler because that management is truly an incredible amount of work. And we're working extremely hard and are very, very committed at Exeter to the safety of our students and our staff and our community. And, you know, I personally take signing that form along with Dr. Hamburger as the board president extremely seriously. And I want to assure the board and the community that, you know, we are following this to the best of our ability to the letter. And, you know, and again, there's a lot of information tonight. It is, it's hard to take in. It's taken our leadership team the better part of a week to fully absorb it. But we've worked hard to have the dashboard be as explanatory as possible, and we'll continue to communicate with the community at large about this because I imagine it will generate many, many questions as we go on. Thanks, Mrs. Harris.
Yeah, in addition to that, before I keep going, I'll just add to that, that I think as all of you know, the guidance changes and gets updated regularly on a regular basis. So we'll be keeping up with that as well. And any changes that we need to make to this dashboard based on that guidance, we'll certainly make sure that you know that that's happening too. Mr. Way, if you could scroll a little further on the dashboard? Thank you. So this section, we felt was important to include because it's kind of the 35,000-foot view of Exeter Township and what's happening outside of the actual school buildings. So these are your COVID cases by zip code in Exeter Township. This is the mainline MAMA information that you very often hear people reference. The first tab on this chart is the positivity rate in the last seven days for our zip codes. Thank you. And then the second tab is the incidence rate per 100,000 people over the last seven days in our zip code. And then for everyone's reference as to what do those numbers mean, below this chart, if you keep scrolling, we embedded the chart that has not changed much in a while from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, which shows what thresholds they utilize to determine whether or not an area is in low, moderate, or substantial category. As most of you know, Berks County's been in the substantial category for several weeks now. The incidence rate would be greater than or equal to 100, and the positivity rate would be greater than or equal to 10%.
Dawn, I have a quick question. And I don't know if this information is available, but the level of community transmission, do we have that for Exeter Township?
So that's the, if you go to the chart ahead, I think this is what you're speaking to, Mr. Fidler, which is the positivity rate and incidence rate for the different zip codes in Exeter.
Okay.
And that's live data and dynamic data as well. So the IT team is taking care of updating that, so that's always fresh for you too.
But do we have the same three levels that the county has?
You mean in terms of low, moderate, and substantial?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Fidler, so part of the reason that we, you know, want to do include this chart is to give that perspective on where we stand relative to the county. As you know, most of the district is comprised of the 1-9-6-0-6 zip code. And with the substantial threshold set at 100 per 100,000 for the incidence rate and 10% positivity, 1-9-6-0-6 right now is at 253, so more than double what would be required from an incidence standpoint in order to be considered substantial. But the, again, just like with the small, it doesn't, I think Chester County has, you set some of its own benchmarks above substantial, but we don't have our own county health department. So the highest level is that 100 per 100,000. So we have been in excess of that in 1-9-6-0-6 for some time.
So I guess I'm still not seeing this, but so we are substantial in Exeter Township?
That is correct. So substantial would be 100 per 100,000, and we're at 253. And substantial from the positivity rate standpoint would be 10%.
Right.
And we're at 20-something plus, so twice the positivity rate to be considered substantial.
Right. It might be helpful to just put that on the dashboard, and then it eliminates the question even before it needs to be asked.
I do believe that it's on the dashboard. It just requires, you know, someone being able to scroll down and see that information right below it.
That Exeter is substantial?
Yes.
Okay, could you scroll down? I just want to see that with my, I'm from Missouri, so I just like to, I just want to see where it says Exeter is substantial.
I think, Mr. Fidler, it requires someone to know their zip code. So, you know, the 1-9, it's, the designations are by township, they're by zip code. So in that chart, you'll see the incident and the positivity rate for the zip codes that comprise the school district. And then below that, the information on what qualifies as substantial according to DOH. So I'll have Mr. Way scroll through that so you can see the different elements.
Okay, I'm still not seeing it, but I don't want to hold up the meeting. Maybe we can go over this after the meeting. I just would think it would be helpful to say, to have Exeter substantial somewhere instead of just all the numbers.
Yep, we could certainly add that, Mr. Fidler.
Okay.
Mrs. Harris, just as a clarification question, when we're talking about zip codes versus the actual municipalities of St. Lawrence and Exeter, we don't have data sets that say Exeter Township and St. Lawrence. Is that correct?
That's correct. The data we have is by zip code. I also want to point out, that's pretty much it for the dashboard. But next to the dashboard, we tried to delineate some very important information that we think is important for community members to see. So we have the health and safety plan located there. We have the attestation form there that the board signed. We have the symptom monitoring tool that we're asking families to utilize every day with their students, and we're also asking staff to utilize daily. We have a link to the PA COVID dashboard there, and we'll be adding some other links there as well for important and timely information related to COVID-19. I do want to reiterate what Dr. Minor said about, you know, thanking our families and our community members and our staff because we're as good as the data that we get in terms of the decisions that we make. And so we're very appreciative of folks when they call and they report to us. And even if they're not sure, they just have something that they think they've experienced, and they want to talk to one of our nurses about it. We'd much prefer that people call and check their thinking and talk things through with us. That's very helpful, that we can be of support to the community that way. And then again, that helps us in terms of collecting accurate data to be able to create an accurate dashboard, to be able to create good decisions based on the updated metrics. Any other questions about the dashboard?
Mrs. Harris, will this be updated daily? Is that, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I just want to say, really commendable job. I mean, it looks, I mean, it's very well done, but it's also, I think, very clear. And it's one of the things that, I mean, we've heard our community ask for information. You know, I know our board feels more comfortable when we know the exact data that we're dealing with. Helps us to really kind of understand the kind of magnitude of the problem and how and when decisions need to be made. But I also think the process that the governor kind of, you know, imposed, you know, on districts to attest to using this protocol and using the metrics as they define them for school closing has really helped to provide a little bit more of an objective process for us. You know, now we have, I think, a clear understanding of, you know, when schools need to close and how long they need to close and when they come back. So I, but I think this, it all really comes together nicely because of how well this is presented on the dashboard, and that's really going to be a big help. I just hope that our families are notified at some point. And I believe there's a plan to do that, to make sure that they understand that a school closing could happen pretty quickly, right? I mean, this could turn around pretty rapidly with the identification of one or two, you know, students with COVID, right?
That's the complex piece of this. We can't control when data is reported to us. So, you know, if we do have someone who reports a positive to us at 5:00 PM at night that tips the scale for a particular building, Dr. Minor's going to be in the position where she's going to have to, you know, make that decision. And so that's the piece we wish we had control over, but because we know that it impacts families, but that's the part that we, you know, are just going to be in that position where we have to make those decisions in a timely fashion.
And I just want to clarify, you know, the idea of making a decision. We really are no longer in the position of making a decision per se. We will hit a number, a threshold number, and then I have to close the school. That is what, in fact, what we attested to. So it's not at my, you know, I'm not in the position to make a judgment call or to decide if three is enough or four is enough. We have signed an attestation form. We will follow the guidance. That was what the district agreed to. If we had not signed it, we would have had to go fully virtual on December 1st. So I will be, at some point this week, you know, putting out a video for our families, really explaining the potential impact because I do think that it will, it has the potential to be quite significant. I mean, our numbers over the Thanksgiving break, if we had used the previous 14 days, we would have had all of our buildings closed. And so I anticipate that in the next two weeks, at least some of our buildings will close. And the fact of the matter is, you know, it will come quickly like a snow day. I mean, if we have, you know, hit three cases in the AM, we may be telling students and families that they're not to come to the PM session. You know, as Mrs. Harris said, if we get the information, you know, that evening, we'll be telling students they can't come the next day. Conceivably, I could be calling, you know, families in the morning, just like with a snow day, and saying that schools aren't open. So the difference is that this is, you know, typically with a snow day or whether you're talking about one day, two days, you know, we're talking five days, seven days, 14 days. And then conceivably, we could be open for one day and then close the next day. So the potential impact for families in terms of childcare, in terms of, you know, students having materials, being prepared to shift quickly to virtual learning will be significant. And we're going to do our best to really make sure that we communicate that to families, that they understand that it's not the district making arbitrary decisions and, you know, we're trying to inconvenience families. We recognize that this will, you know, pose, you know, a potential tremendous burden on families in terms of childcare in particular with little notice. We've worked really hard to give families notice. We know that it's been a burden even with notice. And with this new system, we don't have the latitude to say, well, we'll close two or three days from now to give you time to arrange childcare. So we really are going to need to communicate to families that they need to have a plan for what to do with their children every single day, really. I mean, because we'll never know what day, you know, will be triggered to have to make a closure. So we're going to work hard on communicating that. I would encourage anybody who's watching this presentation this evening to talk to your friends and neighbors and make sure they understand this potential. Again, I'll go out with a video, but I don't want anybody to be caught off guard when this starts to happen.
Mrs. Harris, is there a single process to communicate a COVID or suspected COVID to you? Is there one single process for the community to go through to make that contact? Or is it dependent on each school location and each school leader? I mean, you know...
So there's, I have two answers to that question. One is the process that we've delineated, and then one is what actually in reality often happens. So what we've delineated is that folks should contact their building nurse if they want to report a positive. Staff should be in contact with Dr. Holler if they have issues regarding being positive or quarantining or needing to be in isolation. But particularly with students, I'll use the example of athletics. Sometimes that information just gets to a coach first, and then the coach reports it back to Mr. Legath, who then reports it back to the building nurse and to the rest of us. So I think the process has been delineated, but I think sometimes for particular situations, families just find it easier to reach out to an immediate person, like in that example of athletics. Mr. Way, if you could just scroll up again to the 14-day count because we've talked a lot about the metrics, and I asked you to click on the link, but I just want to show everyone where the link is underneath the chart. If you could kind of hover your, yeah. So that's where the link is, where you can go and study the building closure metrics and look at all three of those charts for small, medium, and large buildings.
I do want to just make another point of clarification. It does say on that chart, recommendations, and the DOH continues to call it recommendations. However, at the time that we signed the attestation form, it's no longer a recommendation. It is an order. So I don't want, and again, I think there's a lot of room for confusion among the community, board members, et cetera, that it continues to say recommendations, but it became an order when we signed the attestation. And again, had we not, you know, the alternative is to be fully virtual. So it is in fact not a recommendation. Those are now an order.
Correct.
Is it, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to go back to that recommendations, that link, and go back to that. It's set on there under substantial. Let's see, it says three to seven days on there. What is this, why isn't it not 14 there? Or, you know, or why is that scale at three to seven?
Mr. Way, you need to scroll up to the top of that chart. So it's dependent on the number of cases, Mr. Miller. So two to four is three to seven days, five or more in a small-sized building is 14 days.
Okay, so at the minimum, we would, I'm sorry, I'm, at the minimum, we would do three to five days? Is that how?
If we had two to four cases, it would be a three to seven-day closure. If we had five or more cases, let's say tomorrow, you know, Mrs. Harris hears from three students and two staff members at a Watten, and tomorrow we have five cases at a Watten. It's a 14-day closure. If tomorrow we hear from three students, it's a three to seven-day closure, and then we would reset to zero when we return from the three to seven days. So what Mrs. Harris was saying previously was, how do you determine three to seven? Part of it is your ability to say, were those cases connected? Or does someone clearly say, for instance, my daughter got it at her cousin's wedding? You know, my son got it, you know, at soccer, and we know that they weren't occurring within the school. The other thing with the three to seven days is part of our decision will undoubtedly be made on where are we in the course of the week? So, you know, if we're on a Tuesday, closing Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday takes us through the weekend and buys us another two days versus if we're on a Monday or Sunday night, and then we may close for five school days to get through that number. So there, you know, there is more latitude in the three to seven, obviously, than the 14, and it will be dependent again on the context. How much do we know about those cases, as well as where do they fall in the week? Is there a holiday? Is there a weekend that, you know, buys us a non-school day in that mix?
Okay, so there's a little bit of step tracing in there, kind of like a...
There's a lot of contact tracing in there. In fact, it's one of the things that our nurses have been working extremely hard with our staff and others. So we're keeping seating charts and those kinds of things to try to make sure that we're well aware of that.
Okay.
May I ask where we are relative to quarantine of staff?
I don't know. I don't know. Do you have those numbers again?
We can we can ask Dr. Holler to to give us kind of the current status.
When I spoke to you last time, we had 39 staff that, well, actually, it was 42 staff that had quarantines. From that time, three of those staff members became positive, so they were no longer quarantined. They had moved to the positive case. Since the Thanksgiving break, the majority of those staff members have have come back. We do have two staff members because their spouse tested positive, and they did not. They're on a 24-day quarantine, so they still won't be back till about the middle of December. Since the Thanksgiving break, we now have another staff. We have two more staff members who are quarant, three more staff members who are quarantining. I'm sorry, I forgot someone who called me today. And two, one was symptomatic, two had been exposed to a positive. So as of today, that's that's where we're at, and we're waiting for test results.
So total quarantine at this point is seven?
Total quarantine, we have, the total quarantine right now is is three. Well, it's five because we have two that are at a 24-day, so five staff members.
Thank you.
Any other questions in relationship to the metrics or the dashboard? Again, as Dr. Minor said, it's a lot of information to digest, so we're always happy to take questions at another time as well.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. I appreciate all the information. It's a lot, and thank you to everybody that's been working on it. I appreciate it. Dr. Minor?
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Last month, I presented from my entry plan, my initial findings. Just to remind those who weren't present last month, when I was hired as superintendent last February, part of the interview process was the creation of an entry plan, and then that was formalized as part of my my contract in terms of the the outcomes that I would give the board. And it specified that in November I would bring findings, and December I would take those findings and turn them into some degree of analysis as well as recommendations for next steps. So I'm here at the December meeting. You'll see that the slides really are based on the same slides that were originally part of my entry plan in February, as well as shown in November with the December updates in terms of what I'm interpreting those findings to mean in terms of implications for where we should go with the district moving forward. So I'm going to click through those slides and speak into my microphone, and hopefully everyone will be able to hear me. Mr. Way, do I need to point my clicker in some direction? Okay. So this is just the concluding slide from my original presentation, which was that in December of 2020, I would analyze the findings, key implications, and propose actionable items, and that in January 2021, I was recommending that the school board undertake a strategic planning process based in part on these recommendations as well as the intentions of the board moving forward. These, again, are the reminder of the five focus areas: organizational capacity and alignment, governance and board relations, operations and finance, community and public relations, and student achievement. In terms of the first focus area, organizational capacity and alignment, to summarize my findings, the organizational chart had been outdated and needed revision. The administrative structure needed and continues to need some modifications. The district, I believe, is overstaffed in at every level to varying degrees. That we had two contracts, a support staff and the teacher's contract, which were unresolved at the start of this school year, or at least in the summer, and that staffing across the district is not tightly aligned at this time to student success and has not been reviewed and revised in recent years based on student success metrics. In terms of my analysis, the next steps, the organizational chart has been revised. I did share that with the board in November, and that I expect to continue to evolve as we evolve as a district. The administrative structure has been modified, and I believe that will also continue to evolve as we evolve as a district. Through attrition and realignment, we need to right-size Exeter for efficient and effective services that ensure human capital is utilized purposefully for student success. And one contract was resolved, the teacher's contract, but it will need to be revisited in less than two years. The support staff contract continues to be negotiated at this time, and both contracts must be aligned with the financial realities of the district while reflecting a genuine respect and care for the well-being of our employees. Mr. Way, can you just forward four minutes? Doesn't seem to be wanting to cover. Thank you. Focus area number two is governance and board relations. Findings there, the board and superintendent relationship has been unhealthy in the past, and it will take a conscious effort to rethink and rebuild the board-superintendent relationship on the part of both board members and and me. The board as a whole, oops, skipped me to my next one. Sorry, thank you. The board as a whole has not necessarily embraced the concept of the team of 10 and the idea that the superintendent is the 10th non-voting member of the board, serving in both governance capacity with the board and simultaneously as the top administrator in the district. So in terms of analysis, the next steps, the board as a whole is a very healthy board, I believe, and is well-prepared to establish a positive board-superintendent relationship. The superintendent is prepared to work with the board to build trust between the board and the superintendent and at all levels of the organization and with the community. I would say we are already down that path. I think, you know, I, you know, for my part, I'm very pleased with my my relationship with board members as well as the trust that we've been building, and and I look forward to that continuing. We need to continue with board and superintendent development efforts, both formal and informal. So we've worked with some with P. S. B. A. We've had a lot of good heart-to-heart conversations. I think that that's really important, that that dialogue continues in terms of open and honest communication and intentional development to work on becoming an effective team of 10. And the superintendent and board, you know, have to work collaboratively with trust to maintain healthy boundaries between governance and management. Focus area number three is operations and finance. Findings there are that the transportation center needs to be acted on in 2021. It is in a state of disrepair that is unacceptable. The budget needs to reflect the strategic vision of the district, balancing financial realities, especially being conscious of the tax burden on our community while sustaining the pursuit of excellence. The district must be committed to maintaining a healthy fund balance and resist the temptation to offset future tax increases with fund balance withdrawals. This is critical for the long-term health of the district, and you may recall at our last meeting here at Reifton, when we had our audit presented, the auditor had a similar message regarding the importance of maintaining fund balance. The district needs to pay attention to everyday maintenance, and this, I'm talking about paint and, you know, sidewalk repairs, those sorts of things. Buildings and grounds maintenance is subpar overall and must be systematically addressed, and I think that requires a conscious effort and commitment on the part of the board as well as the administration to do that. In terms of analysis and next steps, the business manager will work with the board to develop a menu of options to bring the transportation center to a safe and functional facility. The administration will present to the board a budget that reflects the strategic priorities of the district. The administration will work with the board to ensure that the budget is in line with financial realities, respects the burden of taxes on our community, and protects the fund balance. The administration will provide the board with a plan for routine maintenance, raising expectations for the day-to-day maintenance of our buildings and grounds, as well as needed special projects. Focus area number four is community and public relations. There's a tremendous pride in our community for our school district. There's a desire in our community to feel connected to the district in a relationship that's built in trust and transparency. There's a need for effective, consistent, and clear communication from the district. The community wants to feel a personal connection to the superintendent. One of the things I heard repeatedly in my entry plan was no no more robo-calls, that they they actually wanted a person's voice when there was a notification. I thought that was telling how many times that came up in terms of their desire for that personal connection. The community combines a rich history and culture with a willingness to move the district into the future in the best interest of our students. Currently, there is not a communication strategy, and communication is haphazard because there is no one individual responsible for the strategy. The district lacks proper and consistent branding. In terms of analysis and next steps, we need to move forward in a way that celebrates and builds on the community pride in our district. We need to develop an effective, clear, and consistent communication strategy. As superintendent, I need to be visible and connected to the community in a personal way. The district needs to consider creating and filling a communications specialist position to provide the time and attention needed for effective communication. The district needs to move forward with a branding strategy. The final area is student achievement. We have approximately 40% of our students across the district who do not read proficiently by third grade. More than 50% of our students are not proficient in math by seventh grade, and 10% of our students are not graduating with their four-year cohort at this point. We have an equity problem in terms of students in special education and students who come from poverty, underachieving across the board. We have not always invested in proper resources and professional development in many areas throughout the district. We have an excellent team of teachers, support staff, administrators, and board members who are ready and willing to do what it takes to improve the outcomes for our students. In terms of analysis and next steps, we must invest in and focus on early literacy. We should set the bar at 100% proficiency in reading by third grade. We must invest and focus on math achievement and recognize its fundamental connection to literacy achievement, and we should set the bar at 100% proficiency in math by seventh grade. We must invest and focus on our graduation rate. We should set the bar at 100% of students graduating on time. We must focus on strategies to include special education students in our general education and provide the scaffolds and supports they need to succeed with grade-level standards. We must focus on and invest in the needs of students in poverty and provide the scaffolds and supports they need to succeed with grade-level standards. Finally, we need to invest in the resources and professional development our teachers need to accomplish these goals. So again, that is, you know, the my mind, in my mind, the key implications and next steps relative to my entry plan, and I would recommend to the board that in January, we work as a team of 10 to undertake some sort of strategic planning process, considering those findings as well as other things that the board wishes to bring to the table on that process. That concludes my presentation, Mrs. Wilson.
Dr. Minor, I just have a quick question related to the strategic planning process. I noticed that in the beginning you said that you would be leading that process, or that's what I took that to mean on the first slide. Will we need to bring in any additional resources outside of the district to do that? Or do you think that you're going to be doing that primarily?
That's a terrific question, Mr. Ahrens, and it's actually one of the first things I would like this team of 10 to consider. Is that something that we want to undertake on our own? Do we want to bring in a consultant? There's some school districts bring in, you know, intermediate unit consultants. There's private consultants, and some undertake it, you know, completely internally. So I think once we know the scope of what we hope to accomplish, I think that will help us make decisions about whether we're able to do that on our own or if we would need assistance to do that.
What would the next steps be for the board at this point? Is that something to be discussed in a board retreat or in a workshop meeting later?
I I think, Mr. Ahrens, that probably the the most appropriate action, and of course, this would be up to Mrs. Wilson and and the board, would be to look sometime in January for a board retreat to talk about to what extent the board supports or agrees with my findings or, you know, finds error with them in some ways or needs to supplement them in some way, as well as the scope of a strategic plan that the board would be interested in pursuing. Would that be a one-year, a three-year, a five-year plan? Would that be a process that would be just among the 10 of us? Or would that be a process where we would bring in community members, you know, teachers, administrators, that sort of thing? So I think a retreat to just discuss the the scope of it would be appropriate, and then to bring forward at a workshop meeting the outlines of that to share with the community and then a timeline and process. I I would just like to clarify, this, the recommendation to do this is above and beyond the comprehensive planning that is required by the state. The comprehensive plan that the state requires is, in fact, a state requirement, and like many things, it's extremely bureaucratic in nature and not necessarily about the specific interests of the district. So while we will complete the comprehensive plan because it's required by law, I do think this should be a distinct process.
Dr. Minor, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. It's probably the most comprehensive presentation I've seen in the seven years that I've been on the board in terms of really focusing on all of our children, and hopefully someday we will get back to our primary focus and not have to deal with what we're dealing with. I know you mentioned consultants. I've worked with a lot of consultants. The only recommendation that I would have is that we make sure, I mean, we're really talking about culture change within the institution, and culture change is not going to come from a consultant. It's really going to come from the people who are working here within a district, the students, the community, et cetera. And I know you know that. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But I would hope that as we proceed, that we would absolutely ensure that all the stakeholders have, you know, some part in that process. And I'm, I think I'm stating the obvious to you, but I'll state it anyway. Thank you.
I'm glad that you're stating it. As I do think that anything that we undertake, you know, and I had a conversation with with Mrs. Wilson and Dr. Hamburger earlier today, I think one of the things that wasn't necessarily in a slide, but I think is really important for the success of the district, is cohesion, right? It's so it's cohesion in what we're doing with literacy and what we're doing with math, but it's also cohesion in what are we trying to accomplish as Exeter Township School District? You know, I think at a previous meeting when I discussed branding, you talked about the difference between branding and the brand, and I think part of what we need to do at Exeter is really capitalize on the tremendous strengths we have here. We really do have an outstanding staff. We really do have an outstanding community. We really do have a highly functional board, which I think people shouldn't take lightly. I've worked with many highly dysfunctional boards. So I think, you know, all of the ingredients, our community, our parents, our students, our teachers, our support staff, our board, our administrators are here, and it's really just aligning. I think Mr. Fidler said at a previous meeting when I talked about urgency, did everybody know where all the canoes paddling in the same direction? That is really what we need to do, and you're absolutely right. The best way to do that is to, you know, from the very beginning, include a variety of stakeholder voices in the process and make sure that they are invested in what we're doing moving forward.
May I ask you one more question? Because I know that we have talked about this as a board, and I think it's extremely critical because we, as a board, have also had to unlearn some behaviors that we developed over the last couple of years. Could you just sort of talk about governance versus administration or governance versus management? Because I I think that we're trying to create some clear demarcation over the things that a board can and can't do or what an administration can and can't do, and I wondered if you could just share some of your thoughts on that.
Certainly, I would be very happy to. You know, the 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 school board is an elected body, right? And it's it is elected, and Pennsylvania is a very big local-controlled state. We have 500 school districts. Pennsylvania, one of the things that's been frustrating with with COVID-19 is it's an L. E. A. decision. It's a local education agency decision, right? Everything is, you know, when when the state doesn't want to deal with it, it's an L. E. A. decision. When they do, it's a mandate. That was a little editorializing. I apologize. But at any rate, you have an elected governing body that is really there to make sure that the interests of the community are represented. The majority of the funding of any school district in Exeter in particular is local revenue, and so our our constituents, our students, their families, and our community, in fact, is the economic engine of this district. They pay taxes so that my salary gets paid, so that our teaching staff salary gets paid so that the buildings are maintained. So it's really critical that the nine-member board serves to represent the interests of that community and that they govern the district, make sure that the decisions that we make as an administrative team relative to expenditures, small and and large, building facilities, those sorts of things, in fact, reflect the the interests of the community in the immediate and over the long term, that, you know, governance really needs to be thinking, you know, beyond any one superintendent, what's in the interest of this district for the next 10, 20, you know, 50 years. what's in the interest of this district for the next ten, twenty, you know, fifty years? And governance is really about some very clearly defined things that are in school code, so purchasing of real estate, adopting of curriculum. Later this evening, we'll talk about approving the number of credits it takes to graduate. School boards have some very specific items that they, they govern. They get to vote on and they get to say whether or not a school district proceeds. The, the day-to-day management of the school district is the responsibility of the superintendent and then, in my case, her designees and their, and their respective areas. And so what happens sometimes is if a school board and superintendent don't have a healthy relationship, those, those lines get blurred, particularly board members sometimes engage in, in management activities because they either feel the superintendent is not in fact doing that or because the chain of command has been broken within the organization over time and there's a lack of trust. So, and sometimes it's because the lines are just blurred by natural circumstance. I think Exeter is a good example of that. You know, forty percent of our teachers live in the district, a much higher percentage of our support staff live in the district. U.S. school board members all live in the district. So Mr. Japina, I know you spend a lot of time at the Giant, you know, in the produce line. Somebody who is a, is a resident but also happens to be a district employee comes up to you and says, boy, I really hate the way Dr. Minor does whatever, right? That, that person is an employee and a taxpayer, so, you know, you politely, you know, say thank you for your comment, I need to buy my lettuce. But it is important that then, you know, if it's an employee complaint, that that person is redirected to the chain of command. You should talk to your building principal, you know, the, the building principal will talk to the assistant superintendent, et cetera, that people don't think that when you're buying your groceries, that that's an opportunity for them to make commentary in terms of their place of employment, just like in any other place of employment, right? There's, you know, you work at the hospital, you don't just, you know, go up to a surgeon and say, I hate the way the CEO of the hospital, do something about it. So, you know, those things are really important, and I think, you know, it is important that, not because we don't want the board to communicate with employees, that sort of thing, it's not about cutting off communication channels, it's making sure that there's effective, efficient, and proper channels of information. The same is true. It's my job, you know, if a board member comes into Reifden and they think the school is dirty, then they need to come to me and say, you know, Dr. Minor, you know, when I was at Reifden, I noticed that the school was dirty. And then it's my job to talk to Mr. Feig and have Mr. Feig talk to his team and make sure that that is addressed. It's not the job of a board member to go up to a custodian and say, you're not doing a good job, you need to, to do a better job cleaning. So, you know, the day-to-day operations, the management, the employee relations, those are all the purview of the superintendent. I think where it's confusing for people, and, you know, and I think it's the case in many school districts, especially school districts that have had turnover with superintendents, as we recently have, is that idea that the superintendent has a foot in both worlds. The superintendent is the tenth non-voting member of the board. The superintendent needs to be involved in governance decisions. A superintendent needs to be consulted, there needs to be discussion and dialogue. The board certainly does not have to agree with the superintendent, the board does not have to agree with one another. But, but I do serve in that governance capacity, making decisions alongside of you, like the strategic plan. But I am the sole administrator in terms of the day-to-day operation and functioning of the district, and you evaluate me. So in that situation, it is that kind of dual, I'm part of your team, but you evaluate my performance. So it's a complex relationship, but when school districts get it right, it's a very powerful relationship, and I, and you can really move a school district quickly in very positive directions when that is a healthy, respectful relationship. But it, but like any relationship, like any marriage, it takes effort and time and, you know, a conscious behavioral choice on the part of all parties to get there.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on in our agenda. On the fifteenth, we'll be looking at minutes from the November Board Workshop and Board Voting Meeting, and we will also be talking about a change in policy. Dr. Hamburger, would you like to discuss that?
Sure, we've got one, just one policy this coming month for first reading, and this is, this may be something we want to talk a little bit about as a board because it's related to board, the board section of the policy, the zero, zero, zero section of the policy, and this is specifically Policy Zero Zero Five. And, you know, it talks a little bit about, and the changes are in reference to the committee structure of the board. And, you know, if you look, if we have the opportunity to get that on the screen, but, you know, if you look at the recommended changes, we're, we're looking to consolidate board committees from currently nine that are on there. Mr. Weig, is that something you could, could you get that, bring that policy up? Just so folks can see that. And down, if you scroll down, you can see the, the affected language. Further down, you can see, it's a bit way down there. There you go. That's it. And so you could see the, what struck out and what's new, and what's happened there here is there's been some consolidation of committees from nine to five, and that's primarily the changes, but I, I thought maybe Dr. Minor and Mrs. Wilson would want to talk a little bit about some of the proposed changes because this is a little bit of a divergence from, you know, how we've operated in the past.
Mrs. Wilson, you mind if I address it? Yes, so it is a little bit of a, of a divergent, not, not a lot, I think, in terms of practice rather than, than titles. One of the things that I think is, again, in my, my short time here and in my presentation last time, that was made very clear to me, was the importance of, of band and music in Exeter Township Schools. You know, in the time that I've been here, we're not, at the High School Tonight, we're here because the play is rehearsing. So really expanding the athletic committee to include extracurriculars and make sure that the board has a focus on all sorts of extracurriculars that our students engage in. The other one that I would like to speak to, or to others, I think facilities and finance, merging them makes a tremendous amount of sense. They're so often intertwined and are all overseen by Mr. Feig and his department, so there, there's a lot of, I think, just logic and efficiency to that. And then the final one is the Education Committee versus the curriculum. You know, when technology first arrived in school districts, it was about business functions, it was about information management systems, it was about time clocks, budgets, that sort of thing. And of course, now, technology is fundamental to instruction, and you can almost not imagine instruction, especially in the pandemic, without technology. And so merging that into the Education Committee and recognizing that technology is fundamentally about education is important. The other thing that I think is really important in my presentation, we talked about the necessity of improving our service to our special education students and their inclusion fully in our school community, and by having student functions, which was often about special education functions incorporated into education, I think sends a strong message to our community that, in fact, it's not a separate and distinct world, but when we say all students, we mean all students, and it's, and it's collective under education. So those are some of the items that were particularly important to me. I'm sure, Mrs. Wilson, you have other things you wanted to say.
Yes, and in doing, in doing this combination, Dr. Minor and I have also been talking a little bit about how we want to meet as a board to have these conversations so that more of the board will be involved in all of the conversations. So that's something that we want to have, maybe an executive session retreat where we can discuss the topic of our committees and how we want to use them going forward, and that's also why on the calendar, I took off the workshop meetings so that we can talk more about maybe restructuring and, and looking at how we might want to have a committee night meeting where we can really delve into these topics, and especially looking at the strategic planning that we are going to be looking at in January, that maybe we can combine it, but we're also then all there and we can all be on the same page and understand any concerns there might be and what we need to do moving forward.
December, December is usually, you know, it is Board Reorganization Month, and that also includes assignment on committees, and board president decides, you know, or makes a recommendation to the board in terms of those assignments. Do you think it makes sense, as you go and start to proceed with that, to use this format for the new assignments, you know, for December, since usually it's the first voting meeting in December where we would choose those committee assignments or approve those?
Yes.
Based on your recommendation.
Yes, I'll be reaching out to everybody.
Okay.
To speak with them about their interests. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no other questions about the, the reading, the one that's up for first poll, uh, first reading?
Dave, can I, can I just mention? I, I like this structure that you're putting in place. It's a, it's a significant change. It's the first changes that I've seen in my seven-plus years on the board, and it's nice to go from nine committees to five because I think it, I mean, I'm not blind to the time that the administration has to spend in these meetings and, and teacher leadership that I look out here and see in the room. It's a, it's a significant commitment, and it's been more so during COVID. And I, I think that, I like how you've combined these things. I think it's thoughtful, and if we could really make sure that we do have, you know, one of my concerns always is that every board member should have access. We should all be working from the same information when we're making the decision, and it's always been in the past that if you haven't made it to a meeting and you sort of didn't do your own follow-up or do your own work, you know, you were, you know, out of luck. And if there's a way that we could just ensure that we're all working from the same information, I think it's a, a more informed board that makes better decisions. I'd also hope that we could, you know, continue to engage ways to, again, involve additional stakeholders in those committee meetings because all of those committee meetings are open to the public in the same way that the board meetings are. So thanks for that work.
Okay, and then we have three policies that are up for second reading in December. As we mentioned previously, these are special education policies that have been, you know, minimally modified based upon some of the recommendations from the state's cyclical compliance monitoring process to kind of bring us, I think, a little closer to some of the compliance goals, you know, for the district. So those are the, those are three additional policies for second reading for December, and that's, I think that's all for policies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Business functions, Mr. Ahrens.
So there are going to be three items on the agenda next week, the most significant which is a waiver of the extracurricular activity fee for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. There will also be a penalty forgiveness for, I believe it's real estate taxes, and then a consulting agreement for the use of our employees in the business office. One quick note that I do want to make about the Business Functions Committee is that we're going to have a meeting next Tuesday. Brian, will there, will the agenda be posted on Board Docs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so an agenda will be posted on Board Docs. I'm going to try and stretch my mind here and see if I can remember the three topics. But the first one is discussion of setting fees for the collection of taxes, the levying of per capita tax for this coming budget, and then also starter conversation for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, no, I got that wrong, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ahrens. The next is personnel, and we will be looking at the retirement of Lori Barr, also appointments of support staff and extracurricular staff, as well as the support substitutes, and some leaves, employee leaves of absences and course requests. Any questions? Okay. Mrs. Stratton, do you have anything for student functions?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Dr. McLendon, curriculum update?
Okay, so, uh...
I'll put your microphone on, Mr. Weig.
Just like Zoom. So when we meet for our voting meeting in two weeks, one of the things we're going to be voting on are some revisions to the graduation requirements, and we had our curriculum meeting right before this, and Mrs. Harris and Mr. Campbell gave a very comprehensive presentation on, on what that entails and also why we're going to make those changes. So is Mr. Campbell still here? Oh, there you are, okay. So I had asked Mr. Campbell if he could maybe look at, show one or two of the slides, especially with what our requirements are now and then what the proposed change is, and this would be effective for the two thousand twenty-one graduation? Oh, you have it up there, okay. I didn't see that.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon.
And then if you, you know, want, I know, I think most of the board members actually participate, were, joined the curriculum meeting, and one or two did not, so you could go back or, you know, any parents want to go look at that, the, the recorded presentation of that. So, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. Yes, I would encourage you to take a look at the presentation from the Curriculum Committee Meeting, but in short, what we are seeking to do is to promote flexibility and provide opportunities for students to pursue individual paths for their post-secondary planning and bring what our requirements are for Exeter more in line with some of our analysis of the barrier, or to eliminate the barriers that we've discovered as well as bring it in line with some of the other schools in the county and high-performing schools around the state. And in this chart, you can see the state requirements on that first column on the left for English, Social Studies, Math, Science, and then our existing requirements. We have what's called a four-by-four requirement of four, English, four, Social Studies, four, Math, four, Science, and then some additional credits in Arts and Humanities, PE and Health, and electives to bring us up to twenty-five. We're proposing that we shift toward a fourteen-credit major, which would be four credits of English, three of Social Studies, Math, and Science, with one additional credit in those three areas, so that students would have fourteen credits in their majors or core subjects, as well as Arts and Humanities credits, which is a state requirement. PE and Health would be reduced to one to allow that flexibility and opportunities within the students' curriculum planning, and then electives of seven to bring it up to twenty-four. Again, all of this is intended to make sure that students have that flexibility to pursue more individualized post-secondary planning, as well as attain a well-rounded curriculum overall and to put them in a very good position for college and work after high school.
Were there any questions from the board about any of this?
Dr. McLendon, just a, a quick question, which I'm not sure is totally related, but I know that Mr. Fidler has talked repeatedly about the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings, and I can tell you that being in healthcare, we are, we see these rankings all the time, and, you know, some of it has to do with how you take the survey or the information that you provide in a survey, and I'm just wondering if, as part of this process that we're going through, as we're addressing, you know, this, this program here to try to reduce our number of, you know, kids who drop out or who don't finish or whatever, but is somebody going to take a look at some point at that U.S. News &amp; World Report? Just the info we submit, do we get to submit info, or is that all collects, is that all sent in, say, by the state or the federal government? I'm just curious as to, as to how they do that, because it, to, to, to John's point, it gets back to branding and perception and all that sort of stuff. I, I personally don't think we're fourteen out of seventeen in Berks County, but how, you know, how do you, how do you get at that?
It's a, it's a really important question, Mr. Japina, and there are a number of different websites and things that rank school districts, right? So one of the ones that you may have seen is called Niche, right? And the Niche ranking, at least historically, I haven't looked at the methodology lately, was very susceptible to, I don't want to say manipulation, but very susceptible to feedback. So for instance, you know, there's a lot of, like, do parents rate it highly? Do kids like the lunches? Those sorts of things. And so, you know, if you aggressively worked with your student body to say that you served great lunches or what, you know, there's, there's some ability, there's some flex in the joints on that one in terms of, you know, where you end up with your scores. There's one called School Digger that ranks schools. It's straight PSSA scores. There is no other piece of metric to that, it's just what, what are your PSSA scores? The U.S. News &amp; World Report has a much... and World Report has a much more complex methodology, but it, none of it is survey-driven or just opinion-driven. The majority of that data is taken directly from what our IT department through the PIMS process, which is our way of reporting to the state, and then they just retrieve that from the state. So our PSSA scores, they, they retrieve AP scores from the college board, those sorts of things. So, you know, while you may or may not agree with the methodology, how they determine what schools are rigorous, and they define that by APs and that sort of thing, it is at least a methodology that is clearly defined. And we have, really since before I got here and saw our rankings, been engaging in discussions around all of the different elements that go into our rankings. So it's inclusive of, for instance, our Keystone Algebra I scores. It's inclusive of how many students take APs, how many of them get a three or higher, and, and obviously our graduation rate of all of the, of the metrics, you know, the graduation rate independent of the ranking is really important, right? Because that's 13 years of a kid's life and whether or not they walk out of here with a piece of paper that really lets them have a future or not. You know, Keystone Algebra, we actually do relatively well. It's interesting, as a district, while our math scores are something that we've been focused on relative to the county, our algebra scores are higher than the majority of the county. So part of what Dr. Winters and Mr. Campbell and, you know, and his team at the high school and I have been looking at along with Mrs. Harris is, what are the elements of that methodology in U.S. News and World Report that we want to get after first because they also represent priorities for the district? And as a nice side effect, will improve our rankings in U.S. News and World Report. So, you know, I think a lot of it is, you know, what, what do you believe about AP classes and those sorts of things, you know, in terms of how much weight you give to U.S. News and World Report. But I would say of all of the rankings, it's probably the most credible in that it has a methodology and it draws its data from reliable sources like the college board or, or the state.
I'd like to add that as I read the methodology, and there's quite a detailed explanation on the U.S. News and World Report website, every school is subjected to the same exact methodology. And in fact, the methodology that was used last year was also used for this year's report. So there's a lot of consistency and no statistician, but the articles I've read about it, there's a lot of consistency between last year's report and this year's report because it was the same exact methodology which was used for all 17,000-plus schools that were ranked.
I have a question. Now, we're making these adjustments right now basically based on the, I guess, COVID situation?
No, no, I really want to be clear about that. There, this is not in any way reflective of or connected to the COVID situation. This is a direct result of the work that Dr. Winters and Mr. Campbell and Mrs. Harris and I have been doing relative to kind of the U.S. News and the World Report being like a flashing alarm, you know, like there's things happening and then saying the graduation rate is, is problematic. What are all of the elements that contribute to that? You know, at the last education meeting, we talked about the importance of elementary literacy and foundational math and how ultimately the high schools are a reflection of what's happened in the whole K-12 process. But then also looking at what are the obstacles to graduation for students who are in special education, are in BCTC, a student who may have failed a class and then not been able to make it up in the summer, those sorts of things. And so when we looked at where our requirements were relative to other requirements, the state standards, we recognized that we were creating artificial barriers and obstacles to student success and limiting student choice. And we didn't want to lower the bar in Exeter in any way, have, you know, the Exeter brand be a lower level brand, which is why we looked carefully at the top 15 schools as ranked by U.S. News and World Report in the state, and, and, and saw that in fact they have a lower credit requirement than what we're proposing and even more flexibility, which reassured us that we weren't lowering the bar. So it's not connected to COVID. But the reason that we wanted to act on it right now is that in order to make other fundamental changes, this is an important first step, and it is one that requires board action. So for instance, the Program Planning Guide, the Soaring Eagle, will be presented to the board around February for their approval. This needs to happen before that document comes out. So it's in a COVID year, but it's not related to COVID.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
I, I want to say too, it, it's about trying to increase graduation rates, but it's about a lot more than that. And I just want to read something that I wrote down that Mrs. Harris said in our, our media, our curriculum meeting right before this. And it's also about equity, and that is access and opportunity for all students. And, you know, for example, we're requiring for math, but if you have a student who is not, you know, interested in math or not going to use that for career goals, then the state requires three math. They could take a fourth, another credit in something that is of interest or more towards their career goals. So it's providing other opportunities for students as well as, as, you know, you know, possibly increasing the graduation rates. So that's, that's what I really like about, and I'm excited about, you know, these opportunities for students, you know. And we're not treating every student exactly the same. We're giving, you know, them some opportunity to pursue things that are going to help them with their career goals and their interests. So any other questions for Mr. Campbell or anyone? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. So that will be on the voting for next time we have our voting meeting. Thank you.
Okay. That is the last item on our agenda for tonight. Before we adjourn, if any board member would like to be heard, now would be the time to do stuff.
Yes. So I wanted, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, I want to say, as school board members, we are required by the Pennsylvania School Board Association to take mandatory trainings. And we also have a lot of voluntary trainings that we do. One of the first things that we learn is that if a vote doesn't go the way you think it should go, you might be upset or whatever kind of emotions you might have about it, and then you get over that, you know, and you move on because you have to come together as a full board to work on the next problem or the next thing. You have heard me several times now talk about this COVID situation and whether we should be virtual and, you know, most recently, Dr. Minor's motion and recommendation that, that she had. So in my last time I was on the board and this time, this is my third year, and this time, I always did that. I always, when the vote was done, I didn't bring it back up again. But this is different. We're not talking about, are we going to vote on propane or diesel buses? You know, we're not talking about raising taxes or not taking, raising taxes. We're not talking about something serious like, should we build a new school building? We are talking about the health and welfare of our students and our staff. This is, this is life and death. You see the statistics, you see the news. Okay. And that is why I keep talking about it because I cannot understand why we would not put safety first. And we, I hear things about closing schools. It is, we are not closing the school because the teachers are teaching virtually. I think Mrs. Kluzowitz mentioned something about teachers being essential workers. Yes, teachers are essential workers. There are a number of people who are essential workers. They're not hospital, in the hospital working. There's different kinds of essential workers. There are people, there, there are doctors who are doing virtual appointments. My daughter's a pediatric physical therapist. She does virtual therapy at times with, with children. My son-in-law hasn't been, he's been working from home since March. My, I mean, I'm naming family members because I know, I see what they're able to do, social workers who are working, you know, virtually. But we, we want our teachers in the building. And, and I hear things like, oh, it's safe. Yes, I think it is a level of safe there. It's safer than it is if, like bars and weddings, those are places where it's spread more easily. But you cannot tell me that a school is 100% safe. Think about a classroom of 12 or 13, five and six-year-olds in kindergarten. Do you think that they are, the teachers are going to be doing everything they can to enforce that and the safety, but you know what five or six-year-old would be doing? I see adults who don't even have their mask, their mask on properly. And, and so I don't think that a school is 100% safe. Yes, it's safer than some other environments, but not 100% safe. I've heard that the parents have an option to put their child in person or virtual. But the rest of the staff does not have that option. They, you know, some teachers may have had an option, you know, when they were trying to decide scheduling. But many teachers and, and all of the other people, you know, everyone who works in this, in the building, they don't have the option. And so I keep talking about this because this is so serious. I thought about, there was analogy, one of our meetings about the superintendent could, you know, they make calls when there's a bad weather. So I thought about that. And they, so they, they, they make calls, they look at the weather, and sometimes the call is wrong and it just rained, or it's a half an inch of snow. But what they did was they aired on the side of caution. And yes, we're talking about if you would go virtual, that's, that's more, more than one day, but they air on the side of caution. So I thought about, with this here model, the test station model says, we're going to wait until a certain number of people get sick. Then, then we'll close the building. Okay. So would we, on a snow day, would we say, well, we're going to wait till there's three to five bus accidents and then we'll close the building? No, we air on the side of caution. Why are we not doing that, you know, in our schools? The other thing I hear is in-person, you know, is, is better. I'm not denying that, but I'm going to add in-person pre-pandemic. This is, this is different. We're, we're in such a crises right now. This model, so I've also heard that this model, you know, with the state is, has these clear-cut guidelines. Okay. And, and, and that's, that's good. I'm glad that they, I'm glad that, you know, they have that. But still, this model says we're going to wait until enough people get sick. And sure, many people don't get that sick. Some people don't have symptoms. And, but you don't know who that's going to be. It could be a child, could be adult. And we know that many people do get sick. Mrs. Kluzowitz gave some numbers, you know, about people that are in ICUs and on ventilators. What we know about this is that some people get very sick and many people die. And that, you know, might be a small percentage. If it's not your family, then, you know, it doesn't seem like a small percentage. If it's your family that has a family member who died, it's going to seem like a big number to you. So I, I don't know. I just, I'm, like I said, I have always let the vote go and never, you know, said it, brought it up again. But I just feel like I cannot let this go because it's too, too important. Now, this model about the numbers we had up there, if we get one student, if, you know, one person with it, or three to five, we're going to close for these days and that days. What I'm hearing, what I was hearing when we were going over all this is, we're going to close the school for three days, five days, 14 days. We're going to open it back up. We're going to close it again. That seems like it's going to be just not consistent and not good for the students. And, and they could, parent could get a phone call in the afternoon, don't have your child come to school. So why, the other thing, this brings me to the recommendation that Dr. Minor made at our last meeting to go virtual from December 1st until January 15th. That is what we're hearing, recommendations to do that because that is going to be the most critical time where things are being spread because of the holidays. We weren't talking about doing this for the rest of the year. We were talking about doing this, at that time, it was 24 school days. That's, to me, seems like a better plan. We're not going to wait for people to get sick, maybe die. We're going to, parents are going to know you have this time period of where you need to make some other arrangements. And I'm not, you know, dismissing the hardships that people have. I know that, I, I'm thinking of one lady that I know that has seven children, two preschools and five in school. That's difficult. You know, we get that. But this is difficult times. I mean, we've never seen anything like this in our lifetime. 100 years ago was the pandemic of 1918. Okay. So we have not been through this. And so, you know, desperate times call for desperate measures. You know, we all want to be back to normal. We all want to have our children in school. We all want to be, you know, to, to, to do that. And, but we, I just feel like we have to think about people's health and well-being and people's lives. Now, the other thing, so Dr. Minor made this recommendation, and I think I said this at the meet, last meeting, we hired her to be our superintendent. And I heard people saying that they, you know, respect her, they think she's doing a good job. But yet, when she came up with a plan that was educationally sound and going to keep people safe, we said no. Okay. Why are we not listening to the experts and why are we not listening to our superintendent? So now we're going to be forced by the, by PDE to, when the numbers start to, just like Dr. Minor said, if we hadn't been on vacation, if the schools hadn't been on vacation, schools would have been closed. I, I just, it's just, that's, it's not, it's not making sense to me. And that's why I can't stop talking about it. Because I, I just feel that we, board members, have a responsibility to be making decisions that keep people safe, keep our children safe, keep our staff safe. We could be, we could be on the other side of this and, and prevent some of the spread after these holidays by, you know, listening to what Dr. Minor said and coming back on the, you know, after the 15th. So I am urging my fellow board members to think, think about this. Yes, it's important that they have in-person, the social, all of that. But we are in the middle of something that's really, really serious. And, and so that's, that's what I have to say about it.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. Does anybody else have anything they would like to say?
Yes, this is Michelle Stratton. I just want to say that after listening to the public comments, I wrote down a lot of thoughts that I wanted to share about myself and my family. But the more that I thought about it as the night went on, I felt like, you know, this isn't about me. So more importantly, I wanted to share this. I just wanted to say that I want you guys to know, please know, that while we may disagree on how we're going to handle this, I have full confidence that this administration, this board, myself included, want everyone to be safe and thriving. I have no doubts about that. I wrestle with what to do and what is best more than anyone will ever imagine. And I know that I'm not the only one. I deeply respect and appreciate all of our staff in this district. And I have no doubt that our staff is working overtime, planning lessons and supporting students as they always have, but also in ways that they have never imagined. So I just want to say thank you, and I hope that all of the staff realizes that that is how we feel about them, that they are amazing, and that we're very thankful for them.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Stratton.
Can I say one more thing? So I also want to say, you know, we, we talk about virtual school as though the students are not learning. The virtual, they're, they're doing a heck of a job, our teachers with the, with virtual. And, and, and we're working harder probably than teachers who are in-person because it takes a lot more. And teachers were not trained to teach, to do virtual. But our teachers are doing a wonderful job. And I, I think that, you know, if they know that a student is struggling, they're going to do, try to do something about that. The same thing with our counselors and, and our administrators are reaching out, you know, to families that need extra support during, during this time. So sometimes I hear things as though, well, if you're not in-person, you're not getting a good education. And I, I don't agree with that. Because I think our teachers are, you know, yes, it's different, but, you know, our teachers are doing an excellent job, you know, under these circumstances. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your comments. All right. If there is nothing else, then we will be adjourned for tonight. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your comments. All right. If there is nothing else, then we will be adjourned for tonight.